I call the order of the February 22, 2024 Old Bridge Township Planning Board Meeting. Could we please rise for a pledge?
(inaudible).
Mr. Lennon?
Here.
Mr. Agapian?
Present.
Mr. De Palma?
Here.
Mr. Lauer?
Here.
Mr. Rena?
Absent.
Mr. Petty?
Here.
Ms. Musella?
Here.
Mr. McGyserick?
Here.
Mr. Brennan?
Yeah.
Mr. Carrara?
Absent.
And Chairwoman Cannon is absent.
Okay, first order of business, minutes of December 14, 2023. Do I have a motion?
I'll move it.
Second.
Mr. Lennon?
Yes.
Mr. Agapian?
Yes.
Mr. De Palma?
Yes.
Mr. Lauer?
Yes.
Mr. Petty?
Yes.
Ms. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. McGyserick?
Yes.
Mr. Brennan?
Second order of business, February 13, 2024, minutes. Can I get a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Lennon?
Yes.
Mr. Agapian?
Yes.
Mr. De Palma?
Yes.
Mr. Lauer?
Yes.
Mr. Petty?
Yes.
Ms. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. McGyserick?
Yes.
Mr. Brennan?
Okay, tonight's application is 77-2023P, Woodhaven Village Estates 2, amended major preliminary and final site plan.
Got it now. Try one more time. Good evening, Mr. Chairmembers of the Board, Ron Shimannowitz, on behalf of the applicant, Woodhaven Village, Inc. We're before you tonight, seeking an amendment to a preliminary major subdivision approval for the section of Woodhaven known as Estates 2. This section was granted approval by this board, granted preliminary major subdivision approval by this board by resolution adopted on January 5, 2016. That resolution was pursuant to application number 57-14P. You'll hear tonight the rationale for some modifications to that prior approval. They're fairly minor, were actually reducing the number of single-family lots that are in the development. We're going from 120 single-family lots down to 117 building lots. The applicant is also seeking extended vesting. You'll hear from our planner and the applicant on that. Just by way of preview for the board, I plan to call Mr. Iaf, who's fairly well-known to the board after all these years, as representative of the applicant. Scott Turner is our engineer from Menlo Engineering. Rob Larson is our professional planner from Atlantic. And we do have the joint review letter from your engineering and planning personnel dated February 21, 2024, and we're prepared to address that. Unless there's any other housekeeping or issues, I would call my first witness, Mr. Iaf. Mr. Iaf, come forward and be sworn.
Good evening, excuse me. Would you please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're going to give this evening is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Can you please just state and spell your name for the record?
My name is William Iaf, spelled I-A-F like Florida-E.
And Bill, if you just want to, most members recognize you because you've been here so many times, but just your connection to the applicant?
I'm a project manager with Woodhaven Village and have been for over 20 years. I'm a licensed engineer and planner in the state of New Jersey, and I'm responsible for the permitting and approvals for Woodhaven Village.
If you could give the board a little bit of background of where we've been with regard to Estates 2 and the history of what brought us to tonight's application.
Okay. Estates 2 is in the far southwest corner part of Woodhaven Village. It's on English Town Road and generally bounded by the Metropolitans Brook and English Town Road at the far southern tip of the township. It consists of, it was approved for 120, 20,000 square foot lots, single families. It is now 117, single-family, 20,000 square foot lots. The reason for the reduction, there are a few reasons. One is some of the lots in Woodhaven Village were moved from Estates 2 into Section 2. And Woodhaven Village has a GDP approval, and there is a total number of units allowable in Woodhaven Village, so the movement of lots from one to the other to increase it in Section 2 means they have to be decreased in Estates 2. So three lots have to come out of Estates 2, and we're doing that. The layout is different, is slightly different. It's different in the northern part of the site. DEPs, stormwater regulations and flood hazard area regulations prohibit development in what they call riparian zones, which you may be familiar with. This is any ditch or creek with a drainage area of 50 acres or more, has a 50-foot no-build zone, a buffer zone around it, and you're not allowed to build in that. So inadvertently, years ago, there were some lots laid out in the riparian zones, so they had to come out. Since those lots have come out, we have gone to DEP and we've got a flood hazard area permit from them. So DEP is happy that we're in compliance with their flood hazard regulations. They're also happy with the wetland impacts at Woodhaven Estates 2. We have an administrative consent order with DEP, Estates 2 predates the wetland regulations. It was back into the 1980s. And we have many deals with DEP and a consent order with DEP that allows development on Estates 2, and we've developed in those areas and not in areas where we're not supposed to be developing. So the layout is a little bit different. It's three units smaller, and it complies with all of DEP's regulations.
That's sort of the general background of what we're doing here tonight. Mr. Iaf, we do have our engineer who's going to testify and show you exhibits, obviously, but Mr. Iaf is prepared to sort of give a summary response to the review letter. If we could allow him to do that, that would be, that would be good. Bill, are you prepared to do that, just sort of hit the highlights on the review letter?
Yes, I am.
Okay, if you could.
We received a review letter from the Old Bridge Planning Board, from the planning, the planning professionals at the township, and the engineering consultant of the township. The application that we submitted was pretty much in the form of a compliance submission for the prior application. The older application had an engineering review letter, and that letter had a number of conditions in it. So our submission of this application not only had the layout changed to satisfy the getting out of the riparian zones, but it also addressed, attempted to address, all of the conditions from the prior letter. So most of, most of the things that the township's professionals were concerned about, I believe we addressed with that letter. Since the layout's different and how time has gone by, there are a few other things that we need to talk about. One is waivers. Since this is actually a new application, there is an item in the ordinance that talks about critical and sensitive areas, and wetlands are one of the critical and sensitive areas. The AACO with DEP addresses the wetlands at the site. So DEP is, according to DEP, we're okay with the wetlands, but we do need to check the box with the ordinance about a waiver from, from the ordinance's section about wetlands. We are, there is also a section in the ordinance that asks about groundwater recharge. We have had our geotechnical, our geohydrological expert, hydrologic expert, check for aquifer recharge on the site and also check for groundwater. The site is underlaid by the Woodbury Clay. There is no aquifer recharge on the site. We've gone over this many times before, but the pre-existing recharge is zero and the post-development is zero, so we technically comply and don't require a waiver for aquifer recharge. As far as groundwater recharge is concerned, it relates to aquifer recharge, but we've got a high seasonal, high groundwater level at the site, so additional groundwater recharge is, is actually advised against. We do not have any landscaping waivers. There's an item in the review letter that talks about that, but we're going to comply with the ordinance's landscaping requirements. The next item that I'd like to address is homeowners association. In the 2016 approval, at the time, the township wanted us to endow, in other words, pay a certain amount of money to fund maintenance of the detention basin over time by the township. Since then, we've been advised that the township, by the township engineer, that the township does not want to do that anymore. The alternative to that is for us to have an association, a homeowners association, to take care of the detention basin maintenance. And also, the township was going to accept the open spaces. We've been advised that the township does not want to accept the open spaces, so the association will own and maintain those in perpetuity. So there's a change now where we will have an association, a homeowners association. Since we're going to have a homeowners association, there's another comment here that asks about if we're going to have a sign out front, kind of a monument sign to identify Woodhaven Estates 2 as the Woodhaven Estates 2 development. Without an association, there's nobody to maintain it, so we did not plan to have a sign. With an association, we now have, we now have a source of maintenance, so we will probably have a sign and we'll give a plot plan to the township to approve. We were also asked about phasing, and we intend to build the project as one, as one unit, to put all the improvements in and then build, and then build the, the project and not come in, in other words, come in for one final approval. This is not an application for final. Come in for one final approval instead of two or three smaller phases of finals. We will also comply with PROAG, which addresses handicapped access on public streets. Public right-of-way accessibility guidelines is what PROAG says, and we'll comply with that. There's also always the question about what's the impact of your project on adjoining properties to the, to the south and to the west. We are bounded by the Metropolitans Brook, so there's no drainage impact or any kind of impact on any properties to the south and west. And flanking the Metropolitans Brook are floodplains and wetlands, so we're buffered from any properties on the other side of the Brook. To the north, there is a wetland complex and a ditch with a 50-foot wide riparian zone, and a property to the north, and I don't like to talk about other people's property, but to the best of our knowledge, it has, it has some wetland issues on it. So we don't think we're going to have any competing development, that we would be bothering them or them bothering us. And the drainage, because there's a ditch and a wetland separating us, and our drainage system drains toward our detention basin, we don't have any, any, you don't drain on anyone else. To the east is English Town Road, and Raceway Park is 1,000 feet to the east of English Town, of English Town Road. As far as utilities go, we are required to obtain approvals from the Old Bridge MUA. We have filed tentative, which is the second of a three-step process with the MUA, water and sewer applications. Capacity for this site was, was determined way back when, when Woodhaven started. We have preliminary approval from the MUA for Woodhaven Village, Woodhaven Village as a whole, so, and Estates 2 was covered by that. Stormwater management, again, we comply with the DEP regulations, and the Old Bridge Township regulations are fundamentally the same as those, so I would submit that we comply with the Old Bridge Township stormwater regulations. And beyond that, there are several other permits and approvals that we need to get, Middlesex County, preliminary subdivision, Freehold Soil Conservation Service, and DEP sewer and water extensions. And we will get, we will get all of those before we come in for final. And all our taxes are paid, and we will pay our inspection fees, and I believe that's really all that I have.
Okay, Mr. Iaf, I'd like to hear from Ms. Sawant. Do you have any questions or comments on this?
No, I don't.
Mr. Darshi?
Thank you, Mr. Lauer. I think I did get a chance to speak to, to Mr. Iaf earlier in the day to go over our review memo, so I'm satisfied that the, that the comments will be addressed. Just one quick question for the record, Bill. One of the comments that we had in our memo was to provide some sort of recreation within this section. Could you just address that?
I missed that one. The property that is, that is not, that are not laid out as single-family lots are open space, and the open spaces are predominantly regulated wetlands. That, they are, two, we do not have any recreation. We don't, not have any parks or anything on the site except for passive recreation through the wetlands. You're allowed to walk through them, you're allowed to fish, you're allowed to do things like that. You're not allowed to build anything. It being part of Woodhaven Village, we have two large recreation areas at Woodhaven Village, swim clubs, clubhouse, that is open to the folks at Estates 2. They do not have to join if their family and friends belong somewhere else, or they go to the shore, they don't have to belong, but that is open to them as residents of Woodhaven Village. They're part of the family. The second reason why we don't have any particular recreation on the site is because they're half-acre lots, and half-acre lots typically have their own swimming pools and their own swing sets and their own recreation facilities on, on, on the lots. And in an area where you have apartments and townhouses, you don't have that kind of space, so you have to have tot lots and, and recreation off-site. We think that, we think the folks here, we have developments like this, and they function, they function very well, so we would, so we don't have a tot lot, and I don't have a spot to put one.
Mr. Darshi, you have any more?
No, actually, I'm, I'm satisfied with what Mr. Iaf represented there. As far as the size of lots, these are fairly large lots, so most of the homeowners will probably have their own small amenities, and the only thing you really could fit on, within the open spaces here, would be some sort of small tot lot, which really would be, at that point, a redundant kind of amenity, I imagine. So I, I'm satisfied with that, that testimony. One of the things that Ms. Sawant was just asking about, Bill, and maybe, I don't know if you want to talk about this, or Scott, we've had some concerns with, with the impervious coverage and all that, as far as after the homes are built, when people want to come in for decks and patios and all that. Do we want to address that at this stage?
So, Mr. Iaf, I know that some of these homeowners, when they come to the zoning office for patios, decks, because there was a variance granted on the lot coverage, or it was the building coverage is the same as the lot coverage, they were denied of permits. And I had talked to Bill Iaf Jr. that maybe I need to create probably the planned developments, I need to create zones which allow these single-family homeowners to put decks and patios, because now you're in front of the board. If that same issue exists even on Estate 2, maybe this is the time for you to address it. Because I'm looking at the square footage on the homes, it's 4,400 square feet, right? I see it on your zoning data.
So basically, at 15%, you'd be permitted about 3,000 square feet of impervious coverage. Is that going to be sufficient for, for future homeowners to build decks and patios and all that, I guess is the question?
I would think so, because they are, they're minimum half-acre lots, and some of them are larger. That, that is an issue on the smaller ones, admit it, but on these, on these larger ones...
Is that something maybe we might want to consider at final, rather than dealing with it on the fly? Maybe, maybe we'll discuss it between now and final and maybe try to address that at final?
It would, might be a good idea to, well, to certainly do it at final and to let people know ahead of time, when they buy them, that that's what the story is.
Okay.
Because, Bill, at 15% of the lot coverage and 20,000 square feet lot, you might have an issue. I think that's something we should address it before the final, so that you don't have to, I don't have to change anything later, or the homeowners who buy the lots don't have to go through the zoning board again.
Before final, a resolution compliance for preliminary?
Or just at final?
At final.
I think, we'll, we'll address it at final, I think. Let's, let's discuss that between us and, and your office, and we'll figure that at final.
You can't do it for a resolution.
No, it has to be at final.
It has to be at final. It cannot be during resolution compliance, but that's something we should look at.
Okay, do we have any questions from the rest of the board? Okay, thank you. Next witness. We got to open to the public. Anybody from the public, like to ask a question of Mr. Iaf? Seeing no hands? Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next witness is Mr. Scott Turner, site engineer.
Mr. Turner, would you please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're going to give this evening is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Can you please just state your name and spell it for the record?
Scott Turner, T-Z-N-T-O-M, U-R-N-E-R.
Thank you. And Scott, your qualifications, and you could also mention whether you've been accepted by this board in the past.
Yes, good evening, everybody. It's good to see you all. I have been in front of this board on many occasions. My, my name once again is Scott Turner. I am a graduate of the New Jersey Institute of Technology. I have a bachelor's of science degree in civil engineering. I am a principal with Menlo Engineering Associates. I have over 30 years of experience in the field of civil engineering and land development. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. My license is in good standing, and I provided professional engineering testimony.
You're accepted.
Thank you. Thank you, appreciate that, Mr. Lauer.
Scott, I'm going to turn it over to you, if you can walk the board through the approved subdivision and then what the proposed changes are. Mark a board, we'll start with exhibit A1. A1, if you could tell us what that is by title, date, and prepare.
So this is an exhibit that was prepared by my office. It's Woodhaven Village Estates 2. It is a titled, proposed site plan exhibit, and it has a date of 9/8/15. And the reason for the 9/8/15 date is because I wanted to represent to you what the current approval is with regards to the application. So Mr. Iaf stole a lot of my thunder, so I'm not going to go back and, and spend a lot of time on that. So what this plan represents is 123 tax lots, which include 100 and, I'm sorry, 127 tax lots, which include 120 single-family homes, six open-space lots, and one stormwater management lot. The stormwater management lot is located down in the southwest corner of the property, and it's represented by the blue color. It's a wet pond. So this, this plan has two points of access into the site off of Old Bridge English Town Road. They are labeled as Road A, and Road A is sort of like a horseshoe configuration, and Road A kind of loops back out onto Old Bridge English Town Road. Off of Road A are a number of other public right-of-way roads, B, C, D, E, and F. And so primarily, what this plan represents, and the changes you're going to see, is you're not going to see, in my opinion, much of a change in terms of what the layout looks like here. The stormwater management is still down in the southwest corner, there's been no change. The points of access out onto Old Bridge English Town Road has not changed. Road A itself, which is, again, the main loop road, has not changed. Road A itself, which is, again, the main loop road, has not changed, other than some very slight configuration changes, but not much at all. The primary changes occur up in the northerly section of the property, where you'll see Road D up at the north comes across and tees back into Road A, it's another, again, loop road. So, the new plan, what you'll see is that that road has been split, so we have, Road D will be ending a cul-de-sac, and then Road D has been reconfigured into another cul-de-sac. So, if there's no questions in regards to what you see here, we can move on to what proposal is. Okay, this is another exhibit prepared by my office, Woodhaven Village Estates Two, proposed site plan exhibit with a date of two, twenty-two, twenty-four. So, what this plan represents is the application in front of your, of this evening for an amended preliminary major subdivision approval. And again, for point of comparison, Road A is in the exact location in terms of its points of ingress and egress out onto Old Bridge English Town Road. And what you'll see when you come into the site from the northerly Road A intersection, you come into the site, and then you, you, you run into Road D, as in dog, if you were to make the right at that intersection, and on the prior application, that road continued straight through and looped back down onto Road A. So, now what's happened is we've created a cul-de-sac in order to avoid the riparian buffers and wetland buffers in this immediate wooded area in the, in the north. What we also did is, in order to capture the lots back on the other side of that buffer area, we created a new Road H, which comes in and, again, terminates at a cul-de-sac all the way up to the north. We've also shortened Road F as you come around the site and head down towards the south, making a counterclockwise move around Road A, and you hit Road F, same location as it was prior. The only thing we did is we shortened up the cul-de-sac by about a hundred and fifty feet, again, to pull it out of the regulated area. In terms of comparing this plan to the old plan, this plan now is a hundred and twenty-three tax lots, a hundred and twenty, a hundred and seventeen single-family homes, five open space lots, as opposed to six, and one stormwater management lot. Again, the open space lots and the stormwater management lots are, for all intents and purposes, in the same location as they were, as approved. In terms of some numbers on the property, the open space lots, when you compare the new to the old, the, the new open space area is forty-seven point one seven acres, as opposed to the current approval, which is forty-four point four two acres. The right-of-way, which is the physical prop, the roadways themselves, the public roadways themselves, totaled eleven point nine acres on this new plan versus thirteen point three six acres as previously approved. And then the stormwater management lot remains the same at eleven point nine acres. So, the reason why I wanted to say that is because on this plan here, there's less road and there's more open space. So, in my, my opinion, that's, that's a benefit to the, to the municipality. The project is completely compliant with New Jersey Residential Site Improvement Standards, as it was prior, and all the utilities, lighting, landscaping, stormwater, remain, for the most part, as previously provided, other than the minor revisions and modifications necessary to accommodate the layout changes that I just spoke of.
Thank you, Scott. I know Mr. Eif did a summary view of the review letter by the planner and engineer. Is there anything that you want to add, or we, you know, will comply response?
Yeah, we, my office did review the review letter, and Mr. Eif pointed out the, the points that we needed to speak about. I have no other comments, and we can comply.
Thank you.
Hey, Mr. Turner, you're finished now?
I am finished, yes, sir.
Okay. Vina, you have any comments on this?
No, I don't.
Mr. Darshi?
Same as with Mr. Eif, Mr. Lauer, that we've had a conversation already about, about our review memo, and the applicants agreed to comply, so between now and when they come in for final, we'll be able to meet again, I imagine, and, and make sure that the project is compliant with our review letter at the time of final. So, I have no questions for Mr. Turner.
I'd like to open up to the planning board. Any, anyone have a question for Mr. Turner, or a comment?
Only question I have, so, if we're looking at the prior plan, the biggest change is, we're going to go from left to right, so cul-de-sac A, cul-de-sac B, cul-de-sac C, they're just not connecting any longer?
Correct.
Because, because of the wetlands?
Yes.
Is that, in essence, what, what's going on, and we had to take out those three lots?
Basically, yes, correct. There, there was a reconfiguring of some of the lots because of the capturing them on the, on the, what I'll call the west side of that open wetland area and regulated area, but we basically took Road D and ended it in a cul-de-sac rather than crossing over the regulated feature.
So, D is the squiggly up?
Road D is the first road you get into from the northerly Road A intersection.
When you're coming up, and you make the right, you hit that first cul-de-sac on the right-hand side, that's Road D, so instead of connecting, we, you cul-de-sacked it, and then the top two, you cul-de-sacked as well.
Right, this, this, this Road E, which is furthest to the northwest, was always there as an, ended it as a cul-de-sac, we really didn't change that. Road F is, or, I'm sorry, Road H is the new road that took the place of the Road D as it looped back around onto Road A.
Okay, all right, thank you. And nothing changed with the stormwater management on the south side, right?
No.
It's the same configuration, nothing has changed?
Same configuration, everything, yes. And I, and I should point out, and I failed to mention that, and I think Mr. Eif did, we do and had received our NJDEP flood hazard area individual permits for the project.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions, comments?
I have a question, a couple. All the wooded land that's going to remain wooded, that's not being deeded to the township, correct? That's going to remain?
Homeowners Association.
HOA?
Correct.
Okay. And you brought up the HOA, this came up in another development, if, and now Vina might be able to school me on this, if there's an HOA, the roads remain private, is my understanding.
Actually, the, the roads are built to RSIS standards, and we are offering them for dedication, so the proposed is public roads, but the open space areas, the wooded areas you referred to, the basin, that will be managed and owned by the HOA.
Yeah, Mr. Lending, the, all the roadways in, in the Woodhaven GDP are, are public roadways, other than the multifamily apartments and things like that, those are private parking lots, but all the roadways are actually dedicated roadways to the township.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure we were clear about it, you know?
Yeah, no, that's a really good question, because there are HOAs where they're private roadways.
Yeah.
In this case, the HOA, we've asked, we, Nicole, Vina, and I asked the applicant to form an HOA for the management of the stormwater management basins and the open space, because the township doesn't want to, to accept any more open space or stormwater basins.
I agree with that.
Mr. DePalma kicks me every time.
AC's calculating snow removal.
Yeah.
On his head.
I'm the Republican Works.
How many more trucks we're going to need on the road?
Open space, mowing, road, you know, maintenance, repair, snow plowing, all that falls, you know, in my realm, so we usually find out about it, you know?
Right.
When it's snowing. Yeah, so I just, you know, want to make sure the record's clear. Public roads, which is fine, that gives us plenty of time to plan for maintenance and, you know, have the proper stuff.
Add on your schedule.
What's that? Absolutely, added, added to the list, you know? But, you know, I think with the HOA, I think that's really beneficial to the town and the residents, you know, they're going to expect a certain quality of work, you know, some neighborhoods that we have to maintain, you know, that sometimes becomes an issue, so I think that's really good. Thank you.
For what it's worth, Vina and I actually had a bet on how long it would take for you to chime up about that.
Yes, like.
Anyone else?
Just let me know who won.
Mr. Turner, I have a couple, well, maybe one question. Your previous layout, you don't have to show it.
Okay.
Okay, was that filed in the county?
No, no.
Okay, so you don't have to file, this will be filed, right?
This will be filed once we?
So, there's no need for an amended?
No.
Okay.
The, the approval from two thousand sixteen was preliminary.
Correct.
So, we never proceeded to final, so therefore, we never filed the map. So, there's no map filed as the original approval. This also will be preliminary if the board's inclined to grant this approval. We will have to come back to you for final before we file the map, but we absolutely will have to file a map to create these lots.
Thank you. We can open it up to the public now? Seeing no hands? Like to close the public? Thank you, Mr. Turner?
Thank you. Thank you, Scott. We have one more witness who is our planner, which is Mr. Rob Larson.
Mr. Larson, would you please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're going to give this evening is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Would you please state your name and spell it for the record?
Sure, Robert Larson, L-A-R-S-E-N.
Thank you.
And Rob, the benefit of your qualifications for the board?
Sure, I am a licensed professional planner, as well as licensed architect here in the state of New Jersey. Sat in front of this board, in both those capacities many times, and it's nice to be back.
You're accepted.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Rob, you're here tonight with regard to the applicant's request for extended vesting under Section forty-nine D of the Land Use Law, so I'm going to ask you to speak to that, the rationale for the applicant requesting more than what is the standard vesting under the Land Use Law.
Sure, and just, just to, to clarify what Mr. Shemenowicz has referred to, in the case of a application for preliminary major subdivision, we fit under one of the criteria of the MLUL, which is when a development has greater than one hundred dwelling units or a certain amount of commercial space, the applicant can request that the board would consider an extended vesting beyond the three years. And that is why, what we are asking, and really, the, the law gives the board three considerations. One is that, what is the number of permissible dwelling units under this preliminary approval? The second is the current economic condition, as well as, number three, which is the comprehensiveness of the overall development. And I'm going to sort of start in reverse, because the comprehensive, comprehensiveness of this development, obviously, in being part of Woodhaven, we've heard Mr. Eif speak extensively about the relationship to the previous orders and DEP interactions that we have been through, as well as this current reduction in units. So, we have a number of jurisdictional agencies that are applied to this site. We still have county approval to obtain, which I understand has proven to be a difficult process and time-consuming. We have an expectation that, given the, the various outside agencies that we need to pursue, there will be a significant amount of time before we would even begin improvements, and then putting in the road improvements, we expect would take eighteen months, two years to, to do that work. So, the basic period of time for this approval would be three years, we would meet that very quickly, all things considered. Second is the economic condition. These are, in terms of product, somewhat unique to the overall of Woodhaven. These are half-acre lots, larger homes, and we expect that they will be absorbed at a slower rate than some of the smaller homes that are being sold, as well as the, obviously, the apartments. I believe our client expects about twenty units per year, and at a hundred and seventeen units, it's pretty easy math, that's about six years to absorb these homes. And again, the number of permissible units really speaks to the fact that we do have more than a hundred units, and the, the idea of being permissible is, again, within the, the realm of all of the various outside agencies that have their, their jurisdiction over this site. So, at this time, we are trying to be conservative in our request, and we're asking for an additional, well, for a total of twelve years. That may seem a lot longer than three years, but given, again, all of the, the things that I just described, and really just the absorption of this project, we, we, again, are trying to make a conservative appeal. I guess also, we would not have to appear in front of this board as many times for extensions as well. So, that is what I have for you today, and again, I hope the board would consider the extension of time.
Thank you, Mr. Larson. Vina, would you like to comment?
I don't have any questions.
Mr. Darshi?
I don't have any specific questions for, for Mr. Larson. I think the, the testimony he provided sort of supports the, you know, the argument for extended vesting. I mean, I, I think the only thing I would advise the board is, it's, the applicant can actually request extended vesting at, really, at any time, right? So, they're asking for you for this extended vesting at this time, and again, I'll, I'll defer to Mr. Sardillo to give you all the legal advice, but this isn't something where, you know, if, if the, if the board were to decline to act on that, Joe, could the applicant come back?
Well, they could come back based on other circumstances and other justification for?
But if, if they just don't act on it, if they, not, not that they deny it, but they just say, listen, we don't, we're going to table, we're not going to act on it, they could actually come back at any time, right?
Yes, the approval gives them the, the three years automatically. What they're asking is for the additional time now. So, if the board's not comfortable granting them the twelve years, you don't have to deny it necessarily, you could just not act upon that request, and then they can come back at another time based upon change of circumstances, or the board can act upon it this evening based upon the testimony that's been provided, and then grant them the twelve years. What that means, and I'll just get into it now, I was going to get into it later, is that when you grant preliminary approval, that approval is basically good for three years. That means you can't, doesn't matter what changes at the township level, if they change the ordinances, change of circumstances, they're a hundred percent, when they say vested, it's protected from any of those changes, and they have their rights to develop the property as was approved in the preliminary approval. And by, under the municipal land use law, that approval by law is for three, a three-year period. It does provide for, the municipal land use law does provide for an applicant to request additional time, so that it can go longer than the three years. What typically happens is, you know, they, they, an applicant doesn't, this is not a typical type of request, you know, what happens more often is, the preliminary approval's granted, it, you know, they get the three years, they come near, nearing the end of the three years, or sometimes more often than not, they exceed the three years, and they come back to the board asking for an extension at that time. And the board can grant an extension of that period based on that, that application, based it, based on the proofs that were granted to it. What they're doing now, and the municipal land use law allows for it, is asking that upfront, because they know ahead of time, they have these challenges ahead of them, they know it's going to take them a while to get there, they know have these other approvals as, based on the testimony provided, so they're asking for twelve years at this point, meaning that, within that twelve years, if anything changes in, in the township, any zoning changes that would affect this property, it doesn't affect this approval, this approval stays in effect for, for a period of twelve years, if that's what the board grants.
Right, it's, it's basically three years with two one-year extensions that are, that are, they're allowed, and, and really, for a preliminary approval, what that means is, you have the five years to file your final, right, come back in for final approval and file your final, final plat, which, as far as, you know, building of homes and all that, you'd have to file to, before you start building homes anyway. So, so the twelve years, really, the, the consideration of absorbing the twenty units a year and all that really isn't part of that argument, because you would have to have filed for final already before you start building homes. So, so the extension for twelve years, really, what, what they're asking is, they would like twelve years to, to actually file that final plat, which gives them the twelve years to get whatever approvals, perhaps find a buyer if they're not going to build the homes, that kind of stuff. So, that, that's really what, what that is. So, that's, I just want the board to be aware that there's your, your options are, obviously, grant the twelve years, deny, which means they can't do it, or table, and now they can come back at some other time.
There is one more option we expect, Mr. Darshi, and that is grant extended vesting for less than twelve years. So, as Mr. Sardillo correctly stated, the automatic vesting under the land use law is three years. If that expires, we can come back to you and ask for two one-year extensions. If the board's inclined to grant those, you can vest a preliminary for five years. So, I, I view, you know, the, sort of the basic protection as a five-year period. We're asking for twelve, as Mr. Larson testified, it's a conservative request from our point of view, but you can also consider a number of years, less than twelve. We, we would like to know the vesting upfront. We, we've been through a lot with Woodhaven, and coming back to you periodically and, you know, telling the tale of, oh, it's going to take some time to get this, this rolling. So... So offer that for your consideration.
Okay.
12, 12 years. So. Can I speak, because this board, some folks that are up here, some folks that aren't, we've dealt with planning developments that have been 20-plus years in the making that have all of a sudden turned around and changed. 12 years is a long time, and as a council person and as a planning board member, 12 years, that's not, that's not an acceptable timeframe. In 12 years from now, my daughters will be out, one of my daughters will be out of college. She's 12.
I agree with Eric.
Right?
12 years is too long.
I mean, you're talking about 12 years, this town, I've been in this town since 2009, and this town has changed dramatically in that time, right, and that's only 15 years. To grant something to say, all right, in 12, we have 12 years to do something, that's, that's, that's an unacceptable request. You know, three to five years, I would say, I think the board would be amenable to it, and I think the residents would be amenable to it because building is building. I mean, it could, I mean, everyone who's had a bathroom done in any shape, form could take four months, right? Building a house could take even longer, but 12 years is not something that's amenable. I think bringing it down, I don't know what the board thinks, if five years the right time, or, or that, I don't know.
If I could just clarify, by statute, they essentially have five years. So it's three years with two one-year extensions. So by statute, they already have five years, so if you wanted to go above, if you wanted to give them any relief, it would be above five.
I would say just, five years is a long, long time. Five years is a long time. A lot of things change in this town in five years. So I think five years is, is more than enough.
Okay. Any comments or questions to my left?
Yeah, I'm just in agreeance with that because, you know, it just opens the door for a 12-year site, you know, where trucks and whatever could be going on, and not that you're going to drag your feet, but 20 units, as you said, per year, so that's five years. You need really 120, so you need six years, but then you have, you need a buffer for all the county stuff, and so, I mean, if the five is already existing, maybe we could just come to seven, something for them.
Anyone else?
Yeah. I still think five is more than enough. I wouldn't go past that. Things change. I do agree with Eric. I've been in this town for 30 years, I've seen a lot going on, I wouldn't grant anybody more than five. Things change from there.
So is it a cumbersome burden to come back in five years and ask for the extension if we table it now? I mean, I just, I've lived in Olver's my whole life, and you hear about developments that are starting, you know, before I was even born, and now they're getting built, and, I mean, this original plan was adopted in 2016, and now we're back with a change, and 12 years, I'm ready to retire at that point. I, I think, yeah. Got all these new roads to plow. No, so I, I think the five is sufficient, you could always come back at a later date.
Okay, are we done with questions, comments? Okay, I think we'll open it up to the public. Seeing no hands. Close it to the public. Next.
That's it, Mr. Chair, that's our presentation tonight.
Then we just need to open up to the public for any comments, not necessarily limited to questions of the witnesses, but any comments?
Before we take your dis?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to open up to the public again for any comments of any sort. Close the public. Mr. Sodilo, you're up.
Okay, so based upon, well, I think before I can summarize what the board will be voting on, I think we need to come to a final decision on the vesting extension request, so I can put that into the vote. And I guess maybe also going back to the applicant, do you want us to make a vote at this time? Do you want to maybe withdraw it and then come back at another time, as was discussed? Or do you want us to just to grant it for the five years so you don't have to come back for the extensions? How would, would the applicant like to proceed?
Can I take one moment to confirm that with my client?
Absolutely. I think that's reasonable.
Right ahead.
Yep. Okay. which seems pretty clear, then we would appreciate that protection.
Okay. Absolutely. Well, I can, I'll put it in, I'll put it in the summary, and then we can make a motion. So as typical, I will provide a summary of what was being requested tonight. There is amended, the application is requesting, and a vote for, in favor of the application will be granting amended preliminary subdivision approval, or actually, site plan and subdivision approval, correct?
Just subdivision.
Just subdivision, okay. Amended preliminary subdivision approval, excuse me, for the property, it would be granting the waivers that were presented by, or requested by the applicant, being, dealing with the critical incentive areas and the landscaping.
Landscaping, we will comply.
Oh, no, I apologize, yes, you were right, that is complying, I did write note on that. It was the groundwater recharge.
Correct.
Thank you. I know it's a little mixed up there. So, correct that. The applicant will continue to, will comply with the professionals' reports. Oh, and actually, while we're discussing that, there was a second report, I don't think it was addressed, was from the Fire District, Matthew Bond, dated February 7th, 2024. It just says that it's satisfactory at this time, but I just want to make note of it for the record, that it was part of the application packet. The, and including will be compliance with the conditions of the prior approval as, except as otherwise modified by this application. And they would also include in this would be a granting of an extension for the vesting of the preliminary approval for a period of five years. And I believe that's all, that's, there was any other specific conditions outlined in this discussion at this public hearing?
Okay, do we have a motion with a length of time?
A motion, five years.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Brennan?
Mr. Brennan.
Mr. Lenning?
Yes.
Mr. Agapian?
Yes.
Mr. DePalma?
Yes.
Mr. Lauer?
Yes.
Mr. Petty?
Yes.
Ms. Mazzella?
Yes.
Mr. McIsaac?
Yes.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. One last time. Seeing no hands? Close the public. We need a motion to go into executive session, please.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Second.
And for the record, the, the discussion item for executive session will be the El Ferri litigation.
Mr. Lenning?
Yes.
Mr. Agapian?
Yes.
Mr. DePalma?
Yes.
Mr. Lauer?
Yes.
Mr. Petty?
Yes.
Ms. Mazzella?
Yes.
Mr. McIsaac?
Yes.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.[1237.73]
Okay, I'd like to open it up to the public one more time. 10 oh, hands or...
Nobody.
Nobody. Close the public. I need a motion to adjourn.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Aye everybody.